We welcome you to our Candidates Forum this evening sponsored by the Greater Dover Chamber of Commerce and Dover Listens. My name is Don Breyer and I'm honored to once again serve as the moderator for this evening's forum. Steve Brown from Dover Listens is serving as our timekeeper this evening. We thank all of the candidates for their willingness to run for and to serve in public office. We thank you everyone here in the audience for coming out tonight or tuning in via Channel 22 or on Zoom. Please note tonight's session is being recorded at this time. I would ask you to please silence or turn off any cellphone or other electronic device you may have so as not to disturb our candidates this evening. In addition to the individual candidate choices, each ballot in Dover this year contains 20 charter amendment questions. The topics of these amendments range from revising how the city's ward boundaries are set following the 2020 census, clarifications to a few sections, and making several typographical and formatting changes that were identified in a recent comprehensive review. The complete content of these changes and a short video explaining each amendment can be found in the Voters Guide on the City of Dover webpage, dover.nh.gov. If you are watching tonight on Zoom, look in the chat window where we have posted the link to access that voter guide. The 2021 election will take place on Tuesday, November 2nd. Please visit the city's municipal elections page once again, www.dover.nh.gov for the polling locations and times. Tonight we'll be hearing from the school board candidates in wards four, five, and six. The at-large school board candidates had the opportunity to speak at our last forum on October 20th. That session was recorded and you can view the discussion with both of the at-large school candidates on the City of Dover website under 2021 Municipal Elections. If you're watching on Zoom, again, look in the chat window where we've posted the link where you can access that recording. Candidates in each of the races tonight will have the opportunity to briefly introduce themselves. They'll be asked to respond to several prepared questions. If time permits, we pose the questions that you and the audience and on Zoom have submitted. And there are cards available at the sign-in desk outside the room if you still have not asked a question and you would like to write your question on, or if you're on Zoom, you can submit the questions via the Q&amp;A feature. We'll give candidates one minute for their introductions and then two minutes to answer each of the questions that are posed to them. And again, Steve will be acting as the timekeeper and they are aware of their time limits. We will start tonight with our candidates for the Ward 4 seat on the Dover School Board. We invite up to the podium the candidates Jamie Bergren and Michaela Demeter. Thank you both for joining us this evening and we will start with the one-minute opening statement, who you are and basically why you've decided to run for the Dover School Board, and we will start with Jamie Bergren.
Hi, thank you. I'm excited to be here and excited that you all are here tonight. My name is Jamie Bergren. I am the Ward Ford for candidate for school board. I'm a wife, a mom of two. My husband and I, we owned a business here in town for 10 years, which we currently operate just on a different manner. I decided to run after some challenging things this past year and talking to parents and other community members. I felt that there was a need for more parents on the school board. And that's it.
All right, and Michaela?
Thank you. Thanks, Don, and thanks to the Chamber and to New Hampshire Listens for hosting this. This is a great time to get together. So my name is Michaela Demeter. I'm a 14-year resident of Dover. My husband and I have two kids in second and sixth grade. I have a long history of paying attention to and volunteering in Dover schools. I advocate for these things that I care about. Over the years, this has included fair teacher pay, special education, disability rights, and mental health, among many other things. I've been thoroughly preparing for this important role and all the skill and knowledge it requires. And I'm ready for the full range of responsibilities placed on the school board member. We were asked to speak about a time when we experienced joy in learning. So for my seventh-grade science project, I hatched two bantam chickens in a homemade incubator. Cadbury and alfalfa were my chick babies and they taught me so much, not only about the chick lifecycle, but about patience and anticipation as I waited for them to hatch. Most importantly, they gave me my first taste of the unmatched joy of becoming a mother to my own two babies. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Can I ask a question? I'm sorry. I thought that was just an introduction. Were you also supposed to answer the joy in learning?
If you have a joy of learning that you'd like to...
I do. I'm so sorry. I just heard introduction.
Go right ahead.
So yes, I had a few teachers that really cared and elevated me because they saw the abilities that I didn't necessarily see at the time. The most influential teachers that I had though were not in school. They were my grandmother, my aunt, and my father. My grandmother was a kindergarten teacher for 50 years and she was one of those really special teachers that you don't come across very often. She was the kind of kindergarten teacher that had her students come to her and invite her to their graduations and weddings. My aunt was also a school guidance counselor that brought out the best in me while supporting and challenging my abilities. And my father, he taught math and science before he went on to become a physical therapist. He understood my abilities and challenges because we are very much alike. Now I'm finished.
Great. Thank you very much. As we look back, oh, just a few years to the year 2010, a time before the ubiquity of smartphones, social media memes, the legalization of gay marriage, the rise of Uber, Lyft, and the rest of the gig economy, and before the age of video streaming, machine learning, big data, and next-day delivery, we realize how much and how quickly our world has changed. And we can assume the world of 2032, when today's current second graders will graduate from Dover High is going to be a very different world than we live in now. So what challenges and opportunities do you think the class of 2032 will encounter when they graduate that the class of 2022 may not? And we'll start with Jamie.
So it is hard to tell, especially with how fast things are changing in technology. I do believe that some of the challenges are going to be incorporating advancing technologies while also keeping the human connection. Recognizing the connection piece is huge because that is how children learn best. It's how they learn different styles of learning. It's how they learn different types of personal communication. The personal interaction is human nature, especially for better experience and retention in what they're learning. What I foresee, if there are not some changes made, I hope it does not result in there being fewer students in this public school system. There has been a lot of challenges that concerned parents and taxpayers are faced with, but first and foremost, the kids. I think that we need to keep them upfront and their learning experience along with the rankings in the school. Like, that needs to be top priority.
Michaela?
Sure. Yep. So challenges for, and I'll start by saying 2032 is the year my second grader test of graduates. So I am keeping her in mind when I answer this. It was a real-life example for me. So I think the cost of college education is going to continue to increase, especially if we don't, if we don't fund education in the way that we should. College cost has already risen exponentially since I graduated in 2004. And I think it's only going to continue to become a difficult thing for our students, especially those who are struggling financially to be able to handle the burden, the financial burden. I think the lack of well-paying jobs and the disparity between a college education job and a job for somebody who doesn't have a college education is going to only continue to increase. We have a lot of really high-paying careers right now and that's something that I think is only going to increase in the next decade or so. Fortunately, we have a beautiful career technical center that is going to help prepare our students who decide to not pursue college. Finally, mental health, I think, is still going to be a concern. Our isolation is not going to disappear, especially as we are a community that relies so heavily on technology. But on the opportunity side, I'm so excited about the scientific process that, there's scientific progress, sorry, that we're going to see in the next decade. There are so many things happening right now in the medical, psychology fields, agriculture, certainly computer sciences as well. I think that's going to breed a new type of job, new fields of study, like in environmental protection and climate change. That's something that's important. I think the world will feel smaller and more accessible to our students as they are able to collaborate more and research and travel. And I think we're going to have a more ethnically and ability diverse society. We're continuing to become more ethnically diverse. And that's something that I think is going to be a real asset to our children as they grow up. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. As you look at what's happening in the Dover school system today, what is it that gives you the most hope or pride and why? And Michaela will start with you.
Sure. So the teachers and the staff, the way they innovate to educate our students and to serve them, this constantly leaves me amazed. I've spent a lot of time over the past few months spending time with principals and admins of all of the different campuses within our district and learning about what's going on in each of those campuses. So I've seen things, ways that teachers have been innovating, for example, like the Horn Street Constellations Program. That's something that has been at Woodman Park School for the past several years. It serves our students on the autism spectrum. Horn Street just brought this program into their campus. And it's a wonderful way to keep students who had been in the Horn Street District, who had been traveling over to Woodman, bringing them back into their home district. The Woodman Park Early Intervention Preschool also is a really important thing that our district offers to our youngest learners. The DMS's Guidance Counselor Mental Health Education Series, this is something that I was excited to learn about because I have a middle schooler who will benefit from this. And then Bellamy Academy's Community Field Trips, things like, things that are teaching life skills, really important to this population of students. I'm encouraged about the mental health support that our district is starting to provide and continuing to provide to our students. Support, training, and awareness across the district. And I'm really encouraged by the community and family involvement that I see right now. Our community really came together through the pandemic and I was excited to be, to play a part in that. Finally, just the teacher and staff commitment to our students and schools. There's so much reason to have hope and Dover's doing really well.
Same question.
Yes. So I am proud of the great teachers that influence our kids and lives and they challenge them to continue to always strive to be better. There's pride in being the fourth-largest school in New Hampshire. I just don't feel that the school rankings reflect that. We have a great technology center. We have a lot of possibilities to be one of the top schools in New Hampshire. Yet we, it is something to strive for. I do hope that parents, community, and leaders can work together to get the budget under control, get the rankings more comparable to Exeter, Portsmouth, and Hampton. The school board should be an arm of kids, parents, citizens, and educators. This is not what I have seen lately, what has been going on in the past several years. I haven't seen strong leaders that reflect a leadership front of strength. I think what I've deciphered some of it as is scared of what the citizens are going to think, feel. I just, I just am hoping that there can be more unity between the parents and the leadership.
I know I asked a question a few moments ago looking ahead to the year 2032. Let's look ahead just a year or so. Are there courses that we should be teaching now in the school system that we are not teaching? And why do you think they should be taught?
I would love to see more diverse languages started at an earlier age. If we are having, you know, people of different backgrounds and ethnicities and we're wanting to embrace that, I think that adding some languages that are on the rise. I know that my second grader, she started taking Mandarin last year, which is great. And I think that adding more languages and cultural learnings would be a great way to start incorporating these things into the schools.
Okay.
Yeah. So actually, Jamie, interestingly, I met with the principal of Dover Middle School, Kim Lyons, and she was excited to talk about the the shift that they're making from having a part-time world languages teacher to a full-time world languages teacher as we're just going to allow them to offer a wider variety of languages in the middle school. I think that's a fantastic thing and the only stopping block to that is that we can't find somebody who is willing to be a world language teacher. And that just speaks to the really dismal state of hiring right now. And so I foresee that that will happen as soon as the district can hire that world languages teacher. I'd love to see a financial literacy class in the high school. I do not know if this is because I don't know the entire curriculum of the high school. I don't know if this is offered right now, but if it isn't, that's something that I think would be a really important asset to our students.
And Michaela, we'll start with you on this question. If elected to the Dover School Board, what would you do to help build a bridge between the school board and the city council?
Yeah, absolutely. That's really important. I think what we've seen over the past few years is that there is this really toxic us versus them mentality when it comes to working together for the benefit of all of Dover. The school board, not school board, the school budget takes up 53% of our entire city budget. So it's a huge factor, a huge portion of the conversation about what we're funding and how we're funding it and how much we are supposed to expect as taxpayers to pay toward this endeavor. So one of the things that I'm really encouraged about this election cycle is the relationships that I've been able to form with many of the people, many of whom are sitting in this room right now, who are running also for a seat on the city council or on the school board. I think the work that feels difficult to do has to be done within the context of strong relationships. And if we don't start with strong relationships, it's hard for us to make progress when things feel contentious. So to begin the work of a school board and a city council coming together to talk about how do we split this big pot of money, this 160 or so million dollars that the Dover taxpayers pay and that we receive through grants and other funding like that, we need to start in relationship. So having those conversations, I think, is really important. Being able to start early in the budget cycle, not starting in February or March, but in starting in November or December so that we can have conversations about what we expect are going to be big-ticket items this year and which priorities rise to the top of the everything is a high priority list. Those are things that I think are crucial to do to make sure that we are working together and collaborating.
Jamie?
Can you repeat the question? Sorry.
As a school board member, what would you do to help build bridges between the school board and the city council?
I think just working more as one, I agree with what she said, that it has been us versus them. I do see it as being split and divided. I do believe that they do have separate roles and some of the things should remain separate. But I also think that coming together and maybe having more open meetings between the two would help that. Also, having open conversations between the citizens and the city council and school board, a little bit differently than how they are set up right now. There is a lot of people that want to address some things and the way that it's set up, it's not addressed. It might be a few weeks, could be three weeks, four weeks before there's like an open-style forum for citizens, city council, and school board. But between the city council and school board, I think they should just have more open communication between them and talk about the problems as a whole.
Jamie, this question posed to you first. Many of the candidates, if not all, have expressed the importance of mental health. What would you recommend as steps to improve mental health in our school system?
First and foremost, mental health starts in the homes. The foundations for everything is built in the homes. I think having the resources in school for the kids is good. I knew that, I mean, I grew up in a school system and a family that had, my aunt was a school counselor, our system that I went to, we had school counselors. And I've actually, it's, I've thought about this and was trying to think of a way to have there be resources, outside resources to come in and collaborate with the children. And not, a little bit set up differently than the way that they have introduced some of the mental health programs now. The way that they have it set up now, I'm questioning a few things because it is not with the consent of the parents. I do believe that these things need to be disclosed to the parents unless the child is in a situation where he cannot, he or she cannot let the parent know if there was an issue at home. But I do think working with places in the community to come into the schools and help out that way, whether it's group style or one-on-one.
Michaela, same question?
Yeah, I'm so encouraged by a lot of the work that the district is doing right now regarding mental health. As I've been speaking with people over the past few weeks and months, one of the things that has come up over and over again is people who are of an older generation saying things like, "School isn't like it was when I went to school." And I completely agree with that because what we're seeing now is a student body that is coming in with a wider variety of mental health needs and issues, a more troubling and diverse background of family situations, needs, certain situations like that that I think the school has done a good job in stepping up to meet those needs. What we're seeing right now is that the conversation about mental health is really taking a front seat. And I think it's really important for us to do that because Dover has seen some truly, truly tragic losses over the past few years. Students dying by suicide. And that's something that has shaken us and rightfully so. It should shake us. And so the work that was started and begun and the work that continues now is something that is only going to continue to serve our students and our student body and our teacher population as well. So to that end, the Dover Mental Health Alliance was created about three years ago and I've been excited to plug into that recently. I've got another meeting coming up on Wednesday morning. And it is stepping in as an outside agency to work alongside the school. It's something that is so important for our students. They have sponsored and received grant funding for the ability to to give our students the teen mental health first aid training. This is something that the entire sophomore year student body is going to receive. It's so important for our students to work with each other and to be able to support each other in that way. It's a web and a network of support and we're building it little bit by little bit. But that's how Dover is going to thrive is by promoting and prioritizing mental health within our district. I was fortunate to be able to take, oh, sorry, I'll stop. That's fine.
All right. We will stay with you, Michaela, on for this next question. Dover currently one of many districts around the state that are being sued over its mask policy in the schools. What is your stance on the mask policy, the use of resources and masks? And what would you do to help keep our kids in school safe?
Yeah. Well, I think the pandemic last year taught us a lot about why school in person is so important. Especially people like me who were at home with their students, as well as teachers who are at home struggling to teach on Zoom. We need our students to stay in school. And this is what I keep saying to people over and over. We need them to stay in school. And for them to stay in school right now, that means they need masks on their faces. That's something that science has proven over and over and over and over again. The evidence is abundant and there's really no refuting that. So to keep our kids in school, we keep our kids in masks for right now. That conversation will change as we get down the road, as the students have an ability to be able to get vaccinated. But right now, that's not a reality. So for right now, we keep the masks on the kids. Regarding the lawsuit, I think what Robin said last week summed it up pretty nicely. It's absolutely ridiculous. I can't believe that a group of parents and community members have taken... I can't believe that a group of parents and community members have taken up the time and the energy and the resources in our school district to waste it on something like this. It's disappointing and it's disruptive. And it has been troubling all of the different connections that some of the current candidates have had to this lawsuit. It's something that we all need to be paying attention to. For example, Jamie's biggest financial supporter is the president of the NPO that has filed the lawsuit against the district. So it's something that I'm eyes wide open, and I think all of us need to be too.
So everybody has a free will to contribute however they choose. This person, anybody, anybody can contribute openly in any which manner that they want to. This is still a free country. You know, I I have got a unique situation because I have a child in Dover and a child at PCA. And they are doing just fine. There are plenty of reasons why children should not be wearing masks. Children have almost a zero risk from this, and they've also proven that there's no transmission between children and adults. So, um, yeah, as far as, yeah, I I believe that the parents, I trust the parents to make the right decisions for their children, period. I will always support that. There are no ties to myself in this lawsuit. My nonprofit is completely separate and different. Mine was also created, I was looking into what I needed for this group, which was to support parents and children that were facing difficulties with these types of mandates unlawfully being put in place. I searched online, I found articles for mine. The information that I found was public information, and my nonprofit was started in August. What I've seen is that this one was started, I I think in September. Anyway, the same way that I found the other nonprofits that were supporting parents and children that were facing difficulties, they found the exact same information, period. Thank you.
Let me ask a bit of a follow-up question. Nationally, we're very close to seeing approval of vaccines for children aged five through eleven, which would make pretty much all of our school population eligible for vaccines in the very near future. Would you at any point favor or would you be opposed to a mandatory vaccination for students in our school system?
Mandatory anything I do not support. I trust the parents will make the right decisions for themselves, their children, and their families. There is way too many questionable facts and data coming out about these not being good. And I think that it's really sad that everybody cannot see all of the same studies. There's more cases coming up with people that are vaccinated, that are getting sick and that are transmitting. So I leave it up to the choice of the parents.
Fortunately, vaccines of many types are mandated currently in the school district. So there's a strong precedent for the vaccination being mandatory, and for good reason, you know, it's it's a matter of public health. So I have been doing a lot of thinking about this. And I am a person who has extremely strong, well-formed opinions about many things regarding masks and the pandemic and vaccines. Mandating vaccines is not something where I have a strong opinion about it. I have two kids who are ages seven and eleven, so they're both under the age where they're currently eligible to get vaccinated. I will be pulling them out of school the first day the vaccine is available for their age group, and we will be going happily to get vaccinated. It will be a celebration in our family because I believe in the value and the efficacy and the and the the good choice that vaccines represent. As far as whether or not they should be mandated right now, what we are looking forward to in the next week or two is an EUA approval of an emergency use authorization. And I don't know that in an EUA status that a vaccination mandate would be appropriate in the schools. I'm willing to have my mind changed on that. I think that's something where I need to do more research on my own. I need to wait and I need to listen and learn from experts and consult with other people who are a lot smarter than I am on this because that's not my level of training. And so I listen to the experts when it comes to that. I I'm thoroughly undecided, but I'm very excited for my own two children to get vaccinated. And I would encourage people to get their kids vaccinated as well.
All right. And Michaela, staying with you on this question. Which people, places, or research have given you the greatest insight into Dover's specific needs? And as you have prepared yourself in this role as a member of the Dover School Board?
Yeah, I'm so sad that I don't have thirty-five minutes to talk about this. I made a list. I'm trying to find it. So the role of the school board is a really important one because we're enacting legislation for policy and we're also managing a sixty-plus million dollar budget. So I've taken the role seriously. To that end, what I'm doing is I'm creating relationships with the people who are the stakeholders in the district. So what that means is I'm meeting with the principals. I've met with every single principal in all five of our campuses. I've also met with the director of Bellamy Academy, our our alternative high school for students who have kind of different learning needs. I've met with all of the major administrators and directors of the different departments within Dover schools. So Dr. Harbron, I've met with the the director of technology, Kristi Prosser. I've met with the the director of teacher, teaching and learning. I've met with the director of special education. So I'm getting a full three hundred and sixty degree view of our district because it's important to do that. Because by electing me, you're trusting me. You're trusting me with the entire management of the entire program. And for me to to not step into the role, being as educated as I possibly can, would be a disservice to the role, a disservice to the other people sitting on the board with me, and a disservice, most importantly, to our students in our district. So it's important for me to know what I'm talking about and and to be able to back up the decisions I make with real hard facts, to be able to understand that if I don't know the answer to a question, I know exactly where to go to, to look for it, to be well researched and thorough. The other things that I've been doing is is really educating myself regarding all of the different components of the district. So taking courses on mental health, learning about pandemic, pandemic science protocol and things like that. Just last week, I took a training on the swept tax, the statewide education property tax. Understanding all these different components is essential for me to feel like I can say, look, I'm your best candidate, and I do feel like that. Thank you.
Jamie, same question?
Can you repeat the question, please?
What people, places, or research have given you the greatest insights into Dover's specific needs as you prepared yourself for this role as a member of the Dover School Board?
So people, places, and research. The people that I taught to see a huge problem in the increasing taxes every single year, which has put some of our, some of our residents, some of our seniors in a position to where they will not be able to live here in a couple of years. It also puts the area in a position to where younger families are, will not be able to move to the area either because of the rising taxes. The other areas that I see of interest are in in the kids. The the test scores are not that great. Dover does not rank that well. There was mention of teachers going to other areas such as Portsmouth, Exeter, Hampton, because they get paid more. But when I look at the relationship between those towns and where they're ranking in grades three, four, and five, in Portsmouth, we've got reading and math scores in between seventy-seven all the way up to eighty-five, grades three, four, and five in reading and math. Exeter's in the seventies, all the way up to seventy-eight. Oyster River, we've got sixty-seven up to eighty-seven. Hampton, we've got seventy, all the way up to seventy-eight. And then we have Rochester and Dover, third, fourth, and fifth grades, and we are ranking lower than Rochester. So when people talk about moving to different towns because they want more pay, those schools are doing better. So there's a direct relationship between the schools that are paying more and those that are doing better, which means our children and our kids are getting a better education. There's no reason Dover should be at fifty-one percent for reading and math in grades three, four, and five. I mean, to me, that is just a little unacceptable. And especially with the relationship between the tax increases every year, fifty-four percent of it is coming directly from the school board. Thank you.
All right. And I have time for one more question for both of you. And we'll start with Amy. Equity and equality are two words that are often confused. Define what these mean to you and what you would do to ensure that they are implemented in the Dover schools.
So I think that equity and equality are are different. They they walk a very fine line where I think a lot of people will misunderstand between the two. I I believe and I feel if our educators are teaching that not everything is always going to be equal. You base things off of your your merit, your persistence, your hard work, your beliefs, your morals. Across the board, I don't think that it is just that simple, though. I think a lot of it, again, starts in the home. And then the things that are presented in the schools to be more educational-based. So as far as what I see, I think as long as teachers are teaching good manners, be nice, be kind, and love one another, it's going to go a long way than the alternate route.
Michaela, same question?
Last week, on Wednesday, a candidate sat up here and defined equity and equality for us and got it backwards. So I want to make sure to set the record straight about that. Equality means that we're all receiving the same resources and that our success is determined based on our own effort. Some people talk about that as a meritocracy, and that's something that, that's what, that's what equality is. The difference between equality and equity is that with equity, we realize that everyone's not beginning with the same opportunities. We're all starting with a different place in life. We're starting with different opportunities and different backgrounds, different family life, different mental health, different learning opportunities. And equity realizes that we need to work to balance those resources to give everyone a fair chance. So that doesn't necessarily mean that everyone is going to receive the same thing or the same type of thing. What it means is that we look at what people need and we help them fill that gap and meet that need. Does that answer the question?
Are you satisfied with your answer with the question?
That's the difference.
All right. I thank you very much. And with that, we thank our candidates for the Dover School Board in Ward Four, Jamie Bergren and Michaela Demeter. Thank you so much. We will next bring forward our candidates for the Dover School Board in Ward Five, Carolyn Carr and Jessica Rosso. We thank you both so much for joining us this evening. If you would take one minute for your introduction, responding to the one-minute warning that you'll be getting from Steve Brown. One minute, if you would introduce yourself, tell us why you're running for school board, and tell a story about a time in school when you felt joy in learning, and we'll start with Carolyn Carr.
Hi, everyone. Hi, Dover. Thanks, Dawn, for hosting. I'm proud to be a part of this panel and speaking tonight. Thanks for everyone that's listening at home. My name is Carolyn Carr. I'm Ward Five candidate for Dover School Board. I'm a wife, mother, sister, daughter, friend, taxpayer. And I feel it's time for me to step up and serve my community. I attended Woodman Dover Middle School and Dover High. So I've lived in Dover close to two decades with a few gaps here and there. I consider myself a lifelong learner. I've worked in our schools. And what did I miss? My mom said to say my friends would describe me as compassionate, kind, and assertive. So a time I had joy in learning, Mr. Patrick's art class. He retired as Dean Patrick this last year, so many people know him. He hosted the Amazing DC Trip for many years. He respected and listened to students, and I think that's lacking in some areas in our school, and that's critical. So we need to be listening to our students. And he created a fun, comfortable, impactful learning environment that was unforgettable, so.
All right. Thank you. And Jessica Rosso, same question?
Hi there. Good evening. I'd also like to thank the Dover Chamber of Commerce for providing this opportunity for us to express our thoughts and issues. My name is Jessica Rosso. I'm currently serving on the board. The reason why I'm serving on the board is because I believe in the greater good and I want to give back to the community that has been so welcoming to me. I'm an attorney. I'm a single mom. I've been here for a few years. I actually chose to move back to Dover to raise my daughter. When I think back to when I was in school and things that really inspired me to learn, I think of my civics teacher, my freshman year in high school. His name is Mr. Hill. We're still in touch. He had a way of inspiring students to push the boundaries of what we thought we could do and really showed me that I had more potential than I thought I did. And I just really appreciated how he was able to pick and choose, not pick and choose, but he found each student and found what inspired them and nurtured that and helped us grow. Thank you.
All right. And we'll start this question with you, Jessica. As you look at what's happening in Dover schools today, what is it that gives you the most hope and pride and why?
Well, what gives me the most hope and pride is what's happened in the past year. Twenty twenty was hard. It was hard for everybody, having kids home, trying to figure out how to reevaluate everything and how to change around the schooling. We learned that the kids are quite adaptable, and the teachers were there every part of the way. They pivoted on a moment's notice. We had no roadmap as to what we were doing. And I just think it really shows how much they care. One of the things that I love that I've been seeing are the diversity efforts. I've seen the students come together to try to make a more welcoming community for everyone, regardless of where you come from, who you are, what your background is. The Career Technical Institute or Center that we have here is amazing. If you haven't had a chance to tour it yet, please take a moment to do it because the programs that we have are incredible. When I was in high school, we couldn't even think to dream something like that. It's, you know, it's part of our new high school, which people talk a lot about, and I understand. But at the same time, it's a beautiful new high school. We have a laboratory in there that was donated to us that is on par with a hospital. It is simply stunning, and it gives me a lot of hope for the kids for the future who want to explore other avenues rather than just only the college track.
Carolyn, same question?
Hope, pride, and why? I will agree with some of what Rosa said about our facilities. I think we do need to take a step back and admire our own facilities. They're the best in the state. We need to utilize those facilities to raise our academic excellence and bring it up. I have a lot of hope for that because we have an awesome community here in Dover, great people, hardworking families, and we can come together. And I I do see a bright future for our community. And I'm a Dover High graduate, so I have that pride instilled in my heart. And that's why I'm standing here on this board. I want to serve on this board. Hope, pride, and why? Did I, I think I answered everything there.
All right. As you look at what's happening in Dover schools now, what is missing and why does this matter?
Transparency. Some want to say that the budget's available. Okay, it's available, but it's forty, fifty pages long. Some want to say that the budget's available. Okay, it's available, but it's forty, fifty pages long. It's not just, it's not easy to decipher to the average voter. So I think city council and the school board need to come together, have open conversations, real, hard conversations, and work together. It's gonna take time. It may take more other committees. That's missing. So transparency with the budget. It's it's people have questions that aren't being answered, and that's unacceptable as as taxpayers. What's missing? What, listening to parents' voices and considering them when making decisions in our schools? Parents are the primary stakeholder in their child's education. And anyone that says otherwise is wrong, so. Parents' voices need to be heard, period.
Jessica?
What I feel is missing is community support. I understand that Ms. Carr was talking about transparency. The budget is online. The budget is broadcast on Channel twenty-two. You're able to attend meetings. You can email members of the school board. You can email Mr. Lamani, who does a very good job of breaking it down. It is a long budget. It is a very large budget. It is difficult to understand. It takes time to get through it. That's why our budget session or budget season takes so long. But if you ask the questions and you're there and you're at the meetings or participating in some way, it does make it easier to decipher. I think that one of the things that would help is if we did get more funding from the community, and I don't mean that by raising taxes. What I mean by that is having a different share, trying to make per pupil spending a little higher. Thank you.
Stick with you for this next question. The candidates have expressed the importance of mental health. What would you recommend as steps to improve mental health within our school district?
Absolutely. Well, one of the things that we did in a recent meeting was we have allotted S R three funds to further encourage social emotional learning. It's gonna be a much more robust program. I think that having the sophomore training on mental health is huge. I think that peer outreach is one of the things that's going to bridge the gap between what the teachers and the community can do throughout with the students. We all know that obviously in the past year, mental health has become front and center, but it's not a new problem. The school district has been working to do it, but now we finally received more funding to be able to implement the programs that we've been asking for.
Carolyn?
So I'm a strong proponent that of mental health. I'm studying to become a counselor. I see the desperate need for it. And it's just as important, if not more important than physical health. We need to be prioritizing it. Especially now with COVID, our kids are depressed. They're masked up, they're disconnected, they're depressed, and people saying that kids are fine wearing masks and they're adaptable. They are. But there is a cost to this. We don't know what that cost is yet, but I can tell you it's not helping their mental health, so. On the on the topic of mental health, I think gym class should be more than twice a week, especially for middle schoolers. They need that physical energy release. I think we'll see a lot of behavioral improvements when we're these kids are getting out and running off, burning off steam, so mental health top priority in our district right now.
All right, Carolyn, we'll start this question with you. You mentioned masks, and Dover is currently one of the districts in the state that is being sued over its mask policy. The recent lawsuit states masks for children do more harm in their development than provide effective safeguards against spreading COVID nineteen. Do you agree with that statement? And why and what is your your stance on the mask issue?
There is no evidence to the efficacy of masks. Zero children in the state of New Hampshire have died from COVID. You're more statistically likely to die in a car accident. So are we going around telling everybody to wear seatbelts? And 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 mandating that? No. You know? So
Please?
Kids are safe. There's evidence that shows that in districts where masks were optional versus mandated, the spread from student to teacher was no different. So the efficacy of mask has not been proven and under no conditions should school districts be mandating masks, period.
Jessica?
I completely disagree with that statement. First, I would like to say there are seatbelt mandates. You have to make sure that your children under eighteen are buckled. Studies do show that masks work. With school districts that have mask mandates, there are lower cases of COVID. And then to say that children aren't being affected, one point five million children have lost a primary or a secondary caregiver to this disease. So to say that they're not being affected is completely false. Children need to be masked because they need to be in school. To keep them in school, we need the masks. So for anyone to say otherwise, they are not reading the studies. Dover meets with epidemiologists and virologists, and we talk to them. We have talked it through. We listen to the medical experts who have gone to school for this. I will fully support a mask mandate as long as it is reasonably necessary. Right now, we are in a substantial level of transmission, and until it goes down, masks stay on. Zero children have died. But they're being affected.
Right. Thank you very much. And let me remind the audience to withhold any comments while the candidates are up here. Thank you very much. This next question, we will start with Jessica. Do you feel the Dover teachers are paid adequately and why?
I would like to see the Dover teachers be paid at the same competitive rate as our neighboring schools. I think that right now we are losing teachers to school districts who are willing to support them more. So yes, I would like to see them paid on the same level as our neighboring communities.
Carolyn?
I support teachers one thousand percent. I think their salaries should be the last cut from the budget when making budget cuts or considering that. Although if you look, we have many teachers in our district making sixty, seventy, eighty, ninety thousand dollars, dozens of them actually. So again, back to the transparency. Let's all look at the budget together and let's see who's making what and where the money's going. That's it. And so I support teachers, but I don't know that enough about the budget because it hasn't been explained to us taxpayers who have asked several times for clarification to to make an educated statement on that, but I do support teachers and.
All right, let me start this question with you. Which people places or research have given you the greatest insights into Dover's specific needs as you've prepared yourself to sit on the Dover School Board?
My background in finance, compliance and legal. I've worked in our schools. I've seen what goes on. I substitute taught. I went to all the schools as a kid, Woodman, Dover Middle, Dover High. You're asking what prepared me for this with that? My experience, I've served on several boards and committees throughout my career where we were responsible for budgets, project management. I have the skills to bring positive change to our district, which is desperately needed.
Jessica?
Well, for the past few years, I've actually sat on the board. I've gone to the message, to the meetings. I've listened to the administrators. I read every single email that comes through. Currently, I am an attorney, and it gives me a level of background where I can parse through large volume of information and make sound decisions based on that information. I do the research. I listen and then we act.
All right, Jessica, we'll start this question with you. What would be your process to determine what is best for your constituency?
Well, we read the emails. We talk to parents. We talk to teachers. And we go through and we make the the best decision we can at that time.
Carolyn?
Could you repeat the question?
What would be your process to determine what is best for your constituency?
I'm not sure I understand. Process to determine?
What what is best for the people you are serving on the school board, your constituency?
Oh, 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 sorry. Okay. Listening to parents, talking to parents, talking to teachers, everybody. That's the point of a board, right? To be listening to and acting upon the best interests of everybody in our district, and I would do just that. I would consider all sides and respect all sides and try my best to accommodate everybody's needs, which is hard, especially right now. But mandates aren't offering or accommodating all students in our district, and that's a big problem.
We will start this this question with you, Carolyn. What would you do to improve communication between the schools and parents?
Schools and parents. I know that the One Call Now system is very flawed, and we've looked at other ways in the district to implement better technology to communicate with parents. I mean, no one likes getting that call. And it's just, we can do better on that front. So I look to IT companies to contract in possibly to see what's out there. Again, I don't pretend to know everything coming in as a community member and a parent. But I'm willing to roll up my sleeves and learn and implement necessary changes to stay up to date with technology.
Jessica?
Well, I would continue to support the one call. I think that the emails are a good way. I think that we can work with administration and the IT department to maybe redesign the website a little bit, make it a little easier for people to find. I understand that that's a that's a complaint, and it gets difficult to find where everything goes. But I think that, you know, the three lines of communication, telephone, computer, you know, and word of mouth, you know, talking to your, talking to your administrators, talking to the teachers that are on the ground. I email my daughter's teacher at least once a week. We touch base. We touch base with the counselors. I think that keeping that line of communication open is what's gonna help best. And always open to suggestions. If someone has an innovative way that they can think of that would help, that they feel, we'd be happily to look into it and do our best to implement it.
Right, and I will stick with you for this question. Online bullying is a major problem in twenty twenty-one for both students and for parents. How do we tackle this issue as a school board, as a community?
Well, I think first we have to model that behavior. We have to be the adults in the room. And when people come at us, you can't always swing back. Sometimes you have to just go through the material, separate it out and respond in a civil manner. Online bullying, it's very scary. I've seen kids who are being surrounded by it and it's not, it's not enough to just say we need to stop it. And by implementing the programs that we're implementing, that's how we get around it. We teach civility and we model good behavior.
So programs being implemented, I'm not sure I know about any of those programs, but I would love to learn more. Bullying is a huge problem. People, children and adults feel empowered to say certain things behind a computer that they wouldn't say to someone's face. And I think education about bullying and maybe some workshops or bringing some other type of learning into schools, engaging students would help remediate bullying and just dealing with it at the source. If bullying happens, teachers need to report it. Students need to report it and then talk it out. That's how we solve problems in this world. We talk it out. If we don't agree, we need to talk and come to a solution.
Carolyn, this question to you first. What do you feel are the most pressing issues facing our schools outside of masks and the pandemic?
The fact that visitors are not allowed in schools is a great concern for many people in our community. That's back to the transparency problem. And I don't want to hear the COVID risk. You know, teachers walk around, they take their math. That's irrelevant to me. We need to let visitors back into school, grandparents, parents. They miss volunteering and those experiences where parents and grandparents get to share. And those are impactful, and our children are missing out right now by not having that. So visitors in school, top priority. Has anyone seen the school lunches at the middle school? Because they're pretty sad. It's about four dried up french fries, a dried up piece of slice of pizza and an orange. Oh, but we're not allowed in the schools to see that, but somebody posted a picture and I think the lunches and the, we have the funds in Dover. Why? We need to do better with the lunch at schools.
Jessica?
Sorry, could you repeat the question, please?
What do you feel are the most pressing issues facing our schools outside of masks and the pandemic?
Well, I think staying competitive in the world that we live in. That's why we need to keep investing in the technology. I think that keeping our test scores and keeping our kids safe. I think that's huge. I think that kids are exposed to so much more now. And the internet has been a blessing, and it's also been a curse because it allows kids to see the world, and it can be a very good thing, but it can also bring the world down on them. And so I think that that's one of our most pressing needs.
Let me ask you this question first. Your stance on living within the tax cap as it now stands in Dover?
I think that it should always be at the top priority that we live within the tax cap. I also think it's important that the schools get a larger share of the budget so that we can do that. And one of the problems is that we have contractual obligations as a board that we need to meet. And if we cut certain things, people suffer. It's irresponsible for us to cut positions that we need. It's irresponsible for us to cut programs that we need.
Carolyn?
I never think we should be cutting teachers out of our budget. But the whole purpose of a budget is to stay within it. For the past eight years, the school board has overridden the budget. History has proven they cannot stay within it, and that's a problem. A lot of taxpayers, seniors in our community simply aren't, they're gonna be priced out of Dover. So we need to be listening to all community members and really working hard to, again, look at the budget with city council, with the school board, open conversations. But it seems like people don't want to have those conversations, but that needs to happen in order to be able to stay within the budget, and I think we can absolutely do that.
All right, and final question, and we'll start with Carolyn. Why should the citizens of Dover's Ward Five vote for you on November second?
My unique experience in education, in finance, my commitment to Dover and my willingness to do the hard work to serve on this board and to collaborate with our community to bring positive change to the district and ultimately bring positive futures to our children.
And Jessica?
Well, I have been here and I have been doing the work. So I tend to listen more than I speak. And I digest everything that I read and what I hear, and then we act on it. And I think what Dover needs is a steady hand. Someone who is not afraid to listen, but also to speak out when they feel like things aren't going the way we need them to go. You have to be willing to vote against the majority of the school board. And you have to be willing to work with the school board when it's necessary. And I think that I am able to do that. I am able to rise above all of the nonsense and the chatter and make an informed decision with compassion and integrity.
All right. And with that, we thank our candidates for Dover School Board and Ward Five, Carolyn Clark and Jessica Rogers. And we now invite our candidates for the Dover School Board from Ward Six, Michelle Clancy and Emily Lyon. We thank you both for joining us this evening. We ask you to, please take a minute to introduce yourself. Tell us why you've decided to run for the Dover School Board and incorporate a story about a time in school when you felt joy in learning. And we will begin with Michelle Clancy.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for attending or watching online. My husband and I are 16-year Dover residents and property owners, and our daughter attends Horn Street School. Throughout my childhood, I moved a dozen times between kindergarten and high school. Despite attending multiple schools across the state and dealing with constant uprooting, I enjoyed school immensely. I had some remarkable teachers and I'm thankful I received a quality public education. Each school was its own universe with unique strengths and challenges, and Dover is no different. I believe my personal and professional background, as well as my communication and research skills, will be an asset to our schools and to our taxpayers. Professionally, I'm a business and process analyst, process analyst, looking at how people or systems work, then finding creative solutions to increase efficiency, accuracy, or reduce cost. I also, with business partners, founded River Mill at Dover Landing from nothing but an idea back in 2009. We worked as a team, each using our strengths to create a one-of-a-kind event space that remains popular today. Since September, I've met with administrators, school board members, and taxpayers to educate myself about our district and to understand how all the many pieces fit together. I look forward to taking on this important role for our community. Thank you.
Emily?
Thank you, Dawn and Dover Listens and the Chamber for hosting tonight and for all of you for being here as well. My name's Emily Lyon. I am a New Hampshire native. I've been married to my husband for 11 years. We met at the University of New Hampshire. We have spent all of our time here on the seacoast of New Hampshire, with the exception of Kittery for nine years, where we walked into Portsmouth quite often. So spent quite a bit of our time in New Hampshire. We have two beautiful children who are nine and five and a half, currently attending Horn Street. We settled on Dover because it's got, it's a city, but it has sort of a small town feel, some great charm. We thought it would be a great place to raise our children. I have worked for the last 15 years in business development. And so working with people is what I do and what I love. Currently, I work for a large contract manufacturer in the clinical supply business. I work with C-level executives on high-value contracts. I listen to their needs. I understand what their constraints are, whether it's budget, timeline, deliverables. And I then turn around and sell that internally to my company to take on that work and deliver with both clear communication and transparency. This is important, I see, as, as part of a school board member. And if I am voted in to represent Ward Six, I will do just that to serve my constituents.
All right. As we look back to the world of 2010, you were both children back then, I know. A time before the ubiquity of smartphones, social media memes, the legalization of gay marriage, the rise of Uber, Lyft, and the rest of the gig economy, and before the age of video streaming, machine learning, big data, next-day delivery, we realize how much and how quickly our world has changed. And we can assume the world of 2032, when today's current second graders will graduate from Dover High School, will face a very different world than what we live in today. With that in mind, what challenges and opportunities do you think those students who graduate in 2032 will encounter that those graduates of 2022 will not? And we'll begin with you, Emily.
So this is a really interesting question, and I, I took some time to really think about it because while we live in such an on-demand world where everything is at our fingertips and it's great, it's also sort of creating a need for immediate gratification, not only with our children, but with a lot of adults too. And it's drawing a wedge between us as a community. We don't have connection and communication like we once did. And it's really important to keep, to have a successful community. I think with great opportunity that we're seeing with emerging tech, robotics, AI, machine learning, those are all great and they should keep being developed. But I think it also, and while it does, you know, those developments improve speed, quality, cost of goods and services, we do need to, to understand that they are going to displace a large amount of workers. And, you know, we talked, some constituent, or excuse me, candidates talked about how, you know, some kids may not go right into college after high school. So they may go right into the workforce. And so the advancement of these technologies taking place of workers is going to be a challenge.
Michelle?
So we're seeing more and more students coming out of school, whether they're going to college or not, gearing more towards technical professions. And I think that, that trend's probably going to continue because technology is advancing rapidly. I think about, you know, when I was a kid and I had my tandy computer and I was doing some assignments on that and I was like, you know, amazing among my peers. So we need to ensure that we're providing students with opportunities to become technically proficient. I think that it requires its regular use. So we need to make sure they're incorporating the technology into the classrooms and using it on a daily basis. And we need to continue that one-to-one device approach that we were pushed ahead into, thanks to COVID, so that, so that the, the kids have more opportunities to become more technically proficient. I think we do a great job of it at the high school level. My daughter's in second grade. I think at the elementary level, we need more computer-related instruction. You're never too young to learn a language, you're never, which also was coding is a language. And, you know, social media safety, that's a huge thing with bullying and everything that's out there today. And also exposure, exposure to new technologies and equipment, like their smart screens that they have in all the classes now, printers, scanners, stuff that we all take for granted. And on the other side of things, the Career Technical Center will continue to be very important for kids that do not want to go to college. We have an amazing number of programs. I think it's over 20 programs that are offered right now, ranging from everything, automotive repair and bodywork to cosmetology and culinary skills. I'll leave it there. Yes, thank you.
So as you look at what's happening now in the Dover school system, what is it that gives you the most hope or pride and why? Michelle, we'll start with you.
Without doubt, what I am most hopeful about and have the most pride in is our administrative body. I have met with all five principals, Dr. Harbren, all the, the deans of everything on the earth, it feels like. And, and what I noticed across everyone is that they are passionate, they are connected, and they are extremely knowledgeable. They're also very adaptable. They overcome barriers every day. We have a lot of gaps that need to be bridged in our school system. And the, the administrators are coming up with creative ways to, to overcome those. And that trickles down to the teachers. So, you know, I, I work in the private sector. So, you know, your, your team is only as good as who's leading the team. And we have some amazing leaders in our district and, and we should, we should feel very happy about that.
Emily?
So I have a lot of hope and pride as well in our teachers, coaches, admin staff, cafeteria personnel, maintenance and bus drivers. I think, you know, and one thing I wanted to touch on too is, you know, my children attend Horn Street. So my experience hands-on has been really with Horn Street. And I have to say, the guidance counselors do a really amazing job when, right now, we're going into the holiday season and we know that not all of the children in our district are going to have a Thanksgiving dinner, or maybe, you know, they will, but will be challenged. And then even for Christmas gifts and things like that, we have a really great community even outside of the school. But I think what the, what the guidance counselors do, going above and beyond to make sure that every single student has the holiday season that they deserve, is really great. And so my gratitude is, I can't say enough about that. I think it's also important to note that it's not lost on me that these folks leave their families daily to come to work to help mine. And they do it with a smile on their face, and that is really important to me.
All right. And as you look at what's happening in Dover schools now, what do you see that is missing that you would like to see added and why is it important?
So I think connection, I keep going back to that word, connection. You know, and yes, it's on the parents most, I don't want to say mostly, but I think it takes two. Connection between the teachers and the parents and really encouraging open dialogue and communication, inviting parents into the schools. I think a lot, you know, in my campaigning and going door-to-door and speaking with folks whose children are in the district, they're feeling unwelcome at the schools. And I don't think that's a good thing because, you know, as we're seeing rise in bullying and things like that, you know, it does start at the home, it does start with parents and teachers working together as a team. It's central to our success as a, as a district.
Michelle?
I will say, to some extent, visitors are allowed in the schools. Your visit has to have a purpose. So you can't just show up like you used to be able to at the front office and say, hey, I'm here to grab my kid. But I agree with Emily in that it would be great to get volunteers back in the schools. As I'm knocking on doors every weekend, so many people are saying, you know, I really wish I could get back in there. I really enjoyed being in there with the kids. My mother's in a nursing home, I can visit her. Maybe we could try to figure something out so that we can get volunteers back in the school. But what's missing is simply staff. We have a huge shortage of substitutes and teachers, special ed teachers and paraeducators. And this puts teachers in the, in a position where they're, they're losing their prep period. So they're not prepared for their next day or their next class. They can't reset something if it's a science class and they're doing, they're doing an experiment or something. It's also putting principals in a position where Kim Linds told me she teaches every single day because she just doesn't have a substitute to cover things. And so I'm not sure what the solution is to that. Everyone is struggling to hire right now. But, but that is, that is a big problem. And the other thing that's missing is a dedicated grant writer. I think that is something that would pay for itself through getting federal funds, more federal funds in to cover some things that are not coming from the taxpayers.
All right. And Michelle, we will start this question with you. Dover, one of the many districts in the state being sued over its mask policy in schools. What is your stance on masks, the use of resources in masks, and how do you keep our kids safe in schools?
So my stance on masks is no one wants to wear them. But I think the kids should be in school in person. As I think Jessica stated, you know, 2020 was, it was rough. And everyone in this room can attest to that, especially if you have kids in school. We all dealt with it in different ways, but, and right now, because we have substantial spread, the kids need to wear masks. They can't be vaccinated. Not all teachers are vaccinated because there's no mandate. So I think to that end of keeping kids in school, they need to be masked. What's bad for their mental health is being away from school, being separated from their peers and from their teachers and not having the structure and that in-person contact with the people who are teaching them and the kids that they're friends with.
Emily?
I agree. Kids need to be in school. That was, that was something I don't really want to ever go through again. Trying to work a full-time job with my husband, also doing the same thing and having our two kids who are very reliant on help. That's difficult. I also feel as somebody who suffers from asthma, very severe asthma and has bad allergies, I understand that kids who have asthma and full-blown asthma attacks, to have a piece of cloth over their face while they're trying to breathe is very difficult. I also understand and have people close to me that have children with sensory disorders and anxiety. And so wearing a piece of cloth over your face for eight hours a day when you suffer from those, those things is, is difficult, to say the least. I don't think the solution here is to just homeschool your kids if they don't want to wear a mask. We know folks can't afford that. We know folks have to work to pay their taxes, to pay their bills. And so taking their kids out of school for that doesn't make sense either. We talk a lot about diversity, equity, and inclusion, and the district's objective on that is to promote and support overall health and wellbeing for all students and staff. And I think that that actually falls right into the masking for these specific children that are not granted an exemption. Same, same, same people that are for masking their children talk a lot about mental health advocacy. We don't know in five, 10, 15 years what this is going to look like as far as the mental health state of our children, forcing them to wear a mask constantly. So that throws me for a loop there. It really does. I don't understand it. I am not for masking all of the children while they're in school. There are creative ways to do it safely without masks.
All right. Question directed first to you. Emily, what would you do to ensure that the district continues progress on diversity, equity, and inclusion?
So I think that involving community members is, is a huge piece. I think teaching our children from a very young age, which I do, my husband does, kindness is key. If you wouldn't say it to somebody's face, you don't put it online, you don't talk to your friends about it, is it true, is it kind? Would you like it to be done or said to you? That's first. Second of all, I think that there, I believe there is a mentor program in the school and the high school. I think that should be something that we should bring across, you know, high school, middle school, and elementary. It's important to give kids a sense of leadership. It helps them to check in with themselves and to make sure that they're being their best self and to actually know that they're going to be rubbing off on or having an imprint on another child. And leading the way is really important as well. I think, you know, it starts at the home, as another candidate said, and working together with the schools to promote diversity, equity, and inclusion among all students is very important.
And Michelle?
So we have, we already have a city task force on equity and diversity. We also have the Equity Vision Keepers in the school district. And these are volunteers who have come forward to work on this, this committee to make sure that everyone is represented and that everyone's voices are heard. I think that when we talk about equity and diversity, it's about valuing multiple viewpoints, multiple life experiences and backgrounds. It's not about saying one is better than the other, that, you know, is what some people are concerned about. It's simply about acknowledging that there are differences and accepting them. And that's how I'm going to leave that. Thank you.
All right. And staying with you, Michelle, for this next question. Outside of masks and the pandemic, what do you see as the most pressing issues that will be facing the school board and the communities?
Sure. So I already talked about the substitute shortage, the, the teacher shortage. I won't go into that again, but that's definitely a top-level issue. Communication is a big issue. I think the schools are great at communicating with current parents. So I get at least three emails a week, one from my daughter's teacher, the principal, and one from Dr. Harbren. Sometimes more, sometimes I get one from the PTG. But I don't think the district is great at communicating with residents. And, and people talk about transparency. Everything's there, it's just really hard to find. There's, there's links that go nowhere, there's outdated information. And I, I think we need to come up with a solution for that. Not everyone can attend all the meetings, have time to watch all the meetings back if they couldn't attend, read through, you know, an 85-page budget. So we need to find a way to, you know, condense everything and make sure people feel like they understand what's happening and they do have the information. Dover has an initiative called Transparent Dover. And if you, if you want to read about it, it's on the Dover website. But basically, the city wants everyone to know everything. But it's a lot of information. And we have basically one person managing the website and getting everything out there. And that's, that's a problem.
Emily?
Can you please repeat the question?
Aside from the issue of masks and the pandemic, what do you see as the most pressing issues facing the community and the school board?
So there are a lot. I think there, and I, I see some learning loss over the last, you know, the pandemic in the last year has been really difficult for some children. the pandemic in the last year has been really difficult for some children. And it's important to to recognize that because in our district, we don't hold children back. We just move them along, and if, you know, hopefully they get what they need. And if they don't, then, you know, it's up to the parents outside of the school to take charge and make sure that they do get what they need. So I think that's something that I would really like to focus on. I am interested in putting together some sort of a tutor program. I'm not sure how that would look, how we would, you know, finance that, what that would look like. But we do have UNH right next door. They have an excellent early, early childhood education program and education program. And I think utilizing some of the community around us would be helpful there. I think bullying is a huge issue that we do need to focus on. As a child, I was bullied because I have two different colored eyes. And go figure, now, that's the first thing that people compliment me on. So I I feel for children that get bullied. It's not fun, it's not okay. My mom used to cry when it would happen. And so it's not, it's not something that should ever go unaddressed. So I would also work to prepare or to work with a task force to make sure that that is addressed as well.
All right. Next question, first to you, Emily. If elected to the school board, you'll be faced with making difficult decisions. And as you process those decisions, which group do you think you will use most to to process those decisions? The teachers, the customers, meaning the teachers, the parents and students, or the taxpayers of the community?
Wow. I think, you know, being a parent of two students in the school district right now, while I am a taxpayer, I would be representing the school board. And so I'm torn between the students and the teacher. I'm torn between all of them, to be honest with you. But I think my first and foremost would be students and teachers, or, excuse me, students and parents. What do they need? Can I, you know, hear them out and work with the other school board members to address those needs?
Michelle?
I don't think that question was asked in good faith, just going to throw it out there. The answer is everything. You have to take into account everything. You need to read all the documentation, you need to do your research, you need to talk to the taxpayers, you need to talk to the teachers' union, you need to talk to your fellow school board members, sometimes the city council, and make an informed, data-driven decision that makes sense. To say that you will make decisions based on what your constituents feel is is not possible because I have over 5,000 people in my ward. If every time I have to make a decision, I have to survey and make sure every single person has a say, we would never get anywhere. I'm getting, if you elect me, it's because you trust me to make good decisions.
All right. Michelle, sticking with you for this next question. All of the candidates have expressed the importance of mental health. What would you recommend as steps to improve mental health status within our schools?
Sure. So I'm really excited about the NAMI Connect program, which I think someone else brought up tonight. We have some sophomores that are going to be trained in November. It's a train-the-trainer model, so once someone is trained on it, they can train other people to do it. And then we talked about how, then how do other kids know which peers are the safe peers, right? Other than their friends, who's out there that can help them? So I think we need to find a way to make sure that kids know who they can talk to. I will say, at the elementary school level, at Horn Street at least, I don't know about the other schools. I didn't ask this question of the others. The counselors are doing weekly meetings with small groups where the kids go with, you know, four or five other kids from different classes, different backgrounds, and talk about all sorts of things. My daughter won't tell me what they talk about. But but I I love to see that at the elementary level because, well, it's, it's nice to say that, you know, mental health starts at home. Not everyone is you, right? Not everyone has the same supports that maybe your family has. Maybe your family is really, really struggling. And if that's what your kids are watching, it's not starting at home. They need to get it from somewhere else. So it is really important that we continue the the mental health efforts in the schools.
I agree on everything that you just said. I think the the mentoring or the train the trainer, that NAMI program is huge. I think it's helpful for kids that, as you mentioned, Michelle, don't have the support system at home. And I, that was one of the things that I really liked about the elementary school is the Guidance Counselor Program. I learned about it, I think, when my son was, I think it started when he was in first grade. I don't remember it being in kindergarten, but it was nice that they did it for everybody. And it wasn't, they were just, you know, singling out a group of children because that's not always comfortable for kids. So it's great to keep those lines of communication open with a safe place in the Guidance Counselor's office. Their offices are great, and they're set up to help the kids feel comfortable to speak about whatever it is they need to to confide in them with.
And Emily, this question to you first. As a member of the Dover School Board, what would you do to help build a bridge between the school board and the city council? And likewise, how would you, as a school board member, improve communication between the schools and parents?
So starting with opening, you know, bridging the gap between school board and city council, I think more joined meetings, open dialogue, communication. What, what issues are we facing? What issues are they facing? Where can we come together? Maybe even, I mean, I'm not sure if this is even allowed, but, you know, instances where there's technology issues, can we implement some sort of a program where the school board and the city council take advantage of the same offerings or same help to save costs on both sides? I think everything starts with having an open dialogue and communication and voicing concerns where they are. And I'm sorry, can you repeat the second part of the question?
Improving communication between the schools and parents.
So the schools and parents, as Michelle mentioned earlier, this bits of, bits and pieces of information are kind of given out here and there. They're available in different areas. The website is a little bit disjointed and confusing. So I think getting that organized, obviously, we would have to stick within a budget that is allotted for that, for that task. But I think it's important to have one central place. There are Facebook groups for parents that have been helpful to me in the past when I, you know, didn't have a specific bit of information that I was looking for, and another parent helped out. That was great. I think something sponsored by the school board or the school district would be a little bit more formal, a little bit more accurate, and available to everybody would be helpful.
I'll talk about the communication piece first, if that's okay. So as I said before, I get at least three emails from the, from the schools every week. And I often find it completely overwhelming. One email might have six attachments on it, and there might be a lengthy letter that precedes it. And honestly, sometimes you just don't have time for that, so you're going to miss something. And you hope that a friend brings it up, or, you know, it's on Facebook somewhere, so you can learn about it. But I think that maybe the PTG could get a little more involved in that. They do send emails once in a while, but I think the way they communicate is just quick snapshots. It's very helpful. So maybe, maybe we could, maybe we could get them involved. I know probably volunteering for the PTG, they're probably struggling to have more volunteers. So that's, that's a whole other issue. As far as connecting the school board and city council. So there's already a joint meeting between the school board and city council that happens on a regular basis. And I was fortunate enough to be able to attend that back on September 30th. And almost all of the school board members were there, most of city council was there. And I was so impressed. It was a situation where there were around a big conference table. The mayor was there, the superintendent was there. And it was, it was just, you know, an hour, hour and a half of talking things through and come, sharing ideas, and, you know, where, how, what progress have we made on this? Where are we going next with this? And I was really happy to see that. I've gotten to know some of the other candidates through this process, and I'm excited to do that with with them.
Right. And Michelle? Which people, places, or research has given you the greatest insights into Dover's specific needs as you've prepared yourself for the role of being a member of the school board?
Sure. So as I said before, I've had a lot of meetings, I'm still going to meetings. All five principals, I've toured all five schools and also Bellamy Academy, and met with the director of Bellamy Academy. I even got to see the animal sciences program and the whole, the whole CTC. But I think that meeting with the administrators, the principals specifically, it's, there are three very different schools. And I originally said, well, I'll just meet with Patty Driscoll. That's where my kid goes, right? And I I changed my mind on that, and I'm really glad I did because they're, they are so different. Their populations are different, their needs are different, the principals are different. The, everything they do is unique to that school. And before I did that, I used to say, well, I'm really jealous of some of the stuff that Garrison does. But there's a reason it's not done at my daughter's school, and it is done at Garrison. And some of it just comes down to resources. But I, something that Dr. Harbren said to me, when I met with him, he was the first, very first person I met with. And it's really stuck with me is that if elected to the school board, you have to take yourself out of it. It is not about you, it is not about your opinion or your politics, it is not about your child or your child's experience. It is about the schools as a whole, and that's everyone affected by the schools. Kids, teachers, other staff, and also the taxpayers. We have to be objective in our role.
Emily, same question?
I'm going to start right there. I think taking yourself out in your own interests, self-interests out of the situation, knowing that you are representing an entire city or district of children, districts worth of children, is very important. I think, I mean, so many people have so many different needs, and catering to one group of people doesn't work. I think all sides, all views, all, all citizens and children of Dover need to be represented. I also have set up meetings to tour each school with the principals at the respective schools. And I think the majority of what the information that I'm, I'm getting that's preparing me is from the residents and the parents of children that are in the schools currently. And it's valuable information, valuable feedback, that I probably wouldn't, I definitely wouldn't have gotten if I hadn't knocked on their door.
All right. And with that, we say thank you to our candidates for the school board seat in Ward Six, Michelle Clancy and Emily Line. I want to thank all of our candidates who participated in our forums. The mayoral, city council, and school board forums are all available for you to view. They have been recorded and are available at the website, www.dover.nh.gov. We remind you, Election Day is Tuesday, November 2nd. We're hoping for a large voter turnout. Good luck to all of our candidates. Thank you all for joining us, and good evening.